Good morning, everyone. I'm Dan Grottnick, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's meeting. Today's date is April 23rd. We're going to begin with votes on several applications related to residential projects throughout New York City, starting with 5294 Sycamore Avenue in Riverdale in the Bronx. This two-story house located in a special natural area district is seeking an authorization for a vertical expansion to make additional space for bedrooms. Moving from the Bronx to Brooklyn, we'll next vote on Grace Houses, a 100% affordable residential proposal that falls within the boundaries of the East New York Neighborhood Plan. The project would include over 150 income-restricted homes and space for Grace Baptist Church, all near several neighborhood resources such as the East New York Health Club, I'm sorry, East New York Health Hub Medical Clinic, that's a mouthful, yes, that's the difference, and NYPD Community Center, two fresh supermarkets, the B-20 and B-83 buses, and the C-Train at Liberty Avenue. We'll wrap up our votes with 145 for Harlem. This mixed-use project calls for nearly 970 new homes, over 290 of them permanently income-restricted, affordable. The building would be close to Brigadier General Charles Young Playground and the Three Train at 145th Street. Moving over to our hearings today, the public is invited to testify on an apartment complex with nearly 30 new homes, seven of them permanently income-restricted, affordable, on North 7th Street between Berry Street and Bedford Avenue in Williamsburg, Brooklyn. Tenants would live close to the Marsha P. Johnson State Park and the L-Train at Bedford Avenue. Our second and last public hearing for today is on land use actions related to the Bally's Ferry Point proposal in the Bronx. This 2.55 million square foot entertainment, commercial, and recreational complex would include a gaming facility, hotel, convention center, and more at a site within Ferry Point Park next to the on-ramp to the Whitestone Bridge. Among its requested actions is the demapping of around 19 acres of parkland, as well as mapping a new city street. As with other gaming facilities that have appeared before us, in addition to these land use actions, Bally's Ferry Point would need to be granted a gaming facility license through a separate state process. That siting process requires approval by a six-person community advisory committee, which includes representatives from the mayor, borough president, and local council member, among others. Once we conclude our public hearings for today, we're going to hold a special review session to hear some new proposals entering public review, starting with 74 Bogart Street in East Williamsburg. At this industrial site, the applicant is looking to build a 240,000-square-foot fine art storage facility that's designed to offer more specialized care than typical self-storage buildings. Notably, this is the first private application, as I noted the other day, to use one of the new zoning districts created through City VAS for economic opportunity, in this case, M14A. We're also going to learn about a 100% affordable proposal in Kingsbridge in the Bronx. 5602 to 5604 Broadway would offer approximately 225 income-restricted homes, of which about nearly 60 would be permanently income-restricted, affordable, located near the One Train at 231st Street. The building would also include a green roof. We'll next go over some design and concourse changes to an existing through-block arcade at 1211 Avenue of the Americas in Midtown Manhattan. These changes would add movable chairs and tables, platform seating, plantings, decorative lighting, and more, resulting in a more welcoming privately-owned public space. The site is close to Rockefeller Center, Radio City Music Hall, and St. Patrick's Cathedral, as well as the 47th, 50th Street Rockefeller Center and 49th Street subway stations. To close, the commission will hold a couple of post-hearing follow-up discussions, including on the Coney Development, a 1.3 million square foot entertainment complex at Coney Island. That would include a gaming facility, hotel, convention center, food hall, retail space, and more. So with that, Madam Secretary, I turn it to you, and let's get started.
Good morning. This is a city planning public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal and in person in the CPC Hearing Room, 120 Broadway, Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025. I will now call the roll. Chair Grottnick?
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
President.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Here.
Commissioner Crowe?
President.
Commissioner Dweck?
Here.
Commissioner Gold?
Here.
Commissioner Goodrich Thompson?
Commissioner Carmani?
Here.
Commissioner Mann?
Commissioner Marine?
Here.
Commissioner Osorio?
Here.
Commissioner Rampishaw?
Here.
A core miss present. The first item is the approval of minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, April 9th, 2025.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve those minutes of April 9th. Thank you, Commissioner Cirullo, for the second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay. Minutes are approved. Thank you.
Scheduling. Calendar numbers 1 through 8, scheduling Wednesday, May 7th, 2025, for a public hearing to be held in person in the CPC Hearing Room, 120 Broadway, and remotely through the NYC Engage Portal.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the resolution. Thank you, Commissioner Rampishaw, for the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. Resolution's approved. Thank you.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page 6. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number 9, 5294 Sycamore Avenue, SNAD, CD8, N250106ZAX, in the matter of applications for zoning authorization concerning 5294 Sycamore Avenue, SNAD. For the adoption of calendar number 9, Chair Grottnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampishaw?
Yes.
Calendar number 9 has been adopted. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 10 and 11, Grace Houses, CD5, calendar number 10, C240184ZMK, calendar number 11, N240185ZRK. In the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendment concerning Grace Houses, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 10 and 11, Chair Grottnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampishaw?
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 10 and 11. Calendar numbers 12 through 14, for 109 Marcus Garvey Boulevard, LSGZ, this item has been laid over. We're going to move to Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 15 through 18. 145 for Harlem, CD10, calendar number 15, C250115ZMM. Calendar number 16, N250116ZRM. Calendar number 17, C250117ZSM. Calendar number 18, N250119ZZM, DCM. In the matter of applications for zoning permit, zoning map, and zoning text amendments, and for the grant of a certification concerning 145 for Harlem, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 15 through 17, and for the adoption of calendar number 19, Chair Grottnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampishaw?
Yes.
For favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 15 through 17, and calendar number 18 has been adopted. So the next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 9.
Great. We're going to ask members of the public who are joining us here in person or on Zoom to limit their remarks to three minutes, and let's get right into the first item. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Chair. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 19 and 20, North 7th Street rezoning. CD1, calendar number 19, C230064ZMK. Calendar number 20, N230065ZRK. Public hearing in a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendment concerning North 7th Street rezoning.
Great. Thank you very much. I have a handful of people signed up on this item. It is unclear to me whether they are all part of the applicant team, but I'm going to call all of their names, and Mr. Lobel can straighten that out for me when he comes up to the microphone on Zoom. We have Mr. Richard Lobel, Faiyan Betan, Victor Efremenkoff, Alexander Zitnik, Christina Dipansky. Okay. Mr. Lobel, whenever you're ready, straighten me out and go right ahead.
Thank you, Chair Grottnick. Chair Commissioners, Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC, here for the applicant in the North 7th Street rezoning. Next slide, please. This is a fairly straightforward rezoning. There are four applicants who are local community landowners who have joined together to rezone eight parcels on North 7th Street in Greenpoint, Williamsburg, to an R6A C24 district. This is a rezoning from an R6B district, is a relatively minor rezoning. Can I have the next slide? So again, these are eight lots located on North 7th between Bedford and Avenue and Berry Street. We are also, of course, seeking an MIH text amendment to allow for options 1 and 2. The end result here would allow for a new six-story development, which would be mixed residential and commercial use, would allow for roughly 28 dwelling units, of which seven would be MIH permanently income-restricted. We note that CB1 voted unanimously to approve the application, and the Brooklyn Borough President recommended approval without conditions. The next slide is the zoning map, which demonstrates that this site is indeed adjacent to an R6A district, that being the MX8 mixed-use M1R6A district immediately to the south of the site. So that was rezoned in 2005. That was an M12R6A, and it was rezoned as part of the Greenpoint, Williamsburg rezoning. The northern portion of the block on which the premises is located was not rezoned. This rezoning would allow for R6A treatment of these lots immediately adjacent to an existing R6A district. The next slide is the tax map, which shows the extent of the rezoning. Here would go from 100 feet from Bedford Avenue through to Berry Street, and would allow for the majority of these lots, which have existing non-conforming commercial uses, to become conforming and allow for commercial use on a going-forward basis, as well as for residential development on the proposed development site. The next slide is the area map, which I think demonstrates well why this is an appropriate rezoning. Again, Bedford Avenue, 100 feet, 150 feet away from the site, the L-Train stop, transportation in the area is excellent. The context of the area is R6A, given not only the remainder of this block, but also blocks to the south and southwest. And as the chair noted, there are numerous parks in the area, Bushwick Inlet Park to note. The ferry is a mere half-mile away, so it's really an area which is well-served by transit and well-able to accommodate the additional bulk and density. In my remaining seconds, if you just want to page through the photos, I would say that we are excited about this project. These are local owners who would contribute both residential units, as well as affordability, to the surrounding area. And with that, the applicants happy to answer questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Lobel. Let me see if there are questions for you. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. Just a quick question to follow up on one of the comments or recommendations from the Board President regarding non-residential ground floor uses. What is the response from the applicant in this regard?
So we are aware that the Brooklyn Borough President, and I have the recommendation before me, is, you know, is interested in allowing for, if you'll excuse me for a moment, so the Brooklyn Borough President has just reiterated to the applicant the importance of allowing for non-residential ground floor commercial uses. Three of the four existing uses on the ground floor of the four sites which comprise the development site are already commercial. It would be the applicant's intention here to allow for commercial use on the ground floor and to allow for local retail. Indeed, we have local retail as part of the current development plan. One of the owners here actually has a local business in the area, so we have no issues in terms of populating that space with local retail use.
Great. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lobel. I understand that the folks that I called out are, in fact, there as backup to you. Is that correct, including Christina? Yes?
Yes, they're just here for questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. With that, seeing no other members of the public wishing to be heard on this item, I'm going to close the hearing on calendar number 19 and 20. Madam Secretary, let's move on to the next.
Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 21 through 23, Bally's Ferry Point Map Amendment. CD10, calendar number 21, C250086ZMX. Calendar number 22, N250085MMX. Calendar number 23, N250093PPX. Public hearing in a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendment and disposition of city-owned property concerning Bally's Ferry Point Map Amendment. Notice, a public hearing is being held by the Public City Planning Commission in conjunction with the above action to receive comments related to a draft environmental impact statement. This hearing is being held pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the City Environmental Quality Review.
Great. Thank you for that. On behalf of the applicant team, we have Max Stember Young, Stanley Schline, Christopher Jewitt, Joshua Herman, Satya Muthaswamy, Nicole Campo, and Jess Corrigan. So, welcome. Whenever you all are ready, you can come right on up to the microphone and get started. You have 10 minutes.
The button is on at the base of the microphone right there.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Appreciate this, Commissioners. I want to thank all the staff, all the agencies we've been working with to get to this point, and obviously our team. My name is Christopher Jewitt, Senior Vice President of Corporate Development for Bally's, and leading this project since we acquired the right stop right at the golf course about 18 months ago. With that being said, here on behalf of the applicant, Bally's New York Operating Company, LLC. So a little bit about the project background and history of the site. So today, we operate about 222 acres under a concession agreement with New York City Parks for the golf course at Ferry Point Park. With that being said, about 60-plus years ago, this was really just a landfill. Over time, that landfill sat for a handful of decades, and ultimately, the city and New York City Parks worked with various developers to get the approvals in order to build a golf course there. That golf course was built and opened in 2015. We subsequently, as part of our strategic action towards our greater vision for the Bronx and for an integrated resort project, negotiated to take that over and have been operating since September of 2023. As such, we're anticipating being able to submit our application to the New York State Gaming Commission in June of this year. Relative to today's operations, you know, we think that engagement and being involved in the local community is extremely important. You can see a ton of different examples of what we're doing today at the golf course, being involved in youth programs, PGA Junior League. We actually brought the first minority minor league golf tournament, the APGA Tour, last year, and we're actually holding the Tour Championship there this year. So we're heavily vetted in the community. Today, we employ about 160 employees. 70% or so are actual Bronx residents, and 80% are New York City residents. We view our future proposed project for the integrated resort, will have similar demographics and makeup, and we actually announced yesterday, didn't make it into these slides, but we actually announced one of our sister arms, a nonprofit, the Bally's Foundation. We were able to reach agreement with the Sisters of Divine Compassion, as well as Preston High School, and we are acquiring that school under our nonprofit and leasing it back to them for $1 for 25 years to keep that private school open. So these types of commitments are things that we do in every market that we operate. With that being said, I'm going to hand it to Jess Corrigan, who is dialed in, and I can flip through the slides as we work through.
Morning. Thank you, Chris. Good morning, everyone. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide, please. The rendering here is a view from the water. This is our site. It's essentially the golf course. We worked really, really hard to keep the new development within the area of the existing clubhouse and parking lots and preserve the golf course as much as possible. We really, really worked to incorporate a sense of the links-style golf course with flowing landscape, combine that with the movement of the water and all of the dynamic influences, including the environment, to inform the massing and the direction of this design. We believe it'll provide a strong sense of place and an iconic presence in the Bronx for years to come, and become more than just a gaming facility, but a part of the community. It'll have facilities for social events, weddings, banquets, retirement parties, all kinds of activities and pieces of life. Next, here you go. This is a view from the water. You can see how we've stacked and masked the hotel. It's around 25 stories. It's well under the top of the bridge, so we didn't, we didn't want to dominate the bridge at all. We're 75 feet or so below that. It's dynamic without being imposing. We put greenery on the parking structure, and you can see the movement along the ground plane to reflect what's going on in the landscape as well. We went over to the neighborhood just north of us and took some shots. You can see in the upper shot, this is the today version, and then on the lower photo, we have copied in the massing of the hotel tower beyond. You can see it's barely visible over the tops of these trees, and these trees are still growing, and will even grow to hide this thing from the neighborhood anyway. So we feel very comfortable with how we've situated the building here in this, on the site. Next. Here's the general massing. You can see the pink, the salmon-colored is generally the casino and the food and beverage. The food and beverage facilities will be accessible without going through the casino gaming floor, so we feel that's an advantage to the community as well. See, the meeting facilities will have a rooftop venue with stunning views of the Bronx and the city, and even watching planes coming in from the corridor. We have an event center that's about 2,800, 3,000 seats that will be accessible, again, without going through the gaming facility, for music events, concerts, shows of many kinds, trade shows, conventions, those kinds of things. Next.
Thanks, Jess. So to cover a few of the proposed improvements, there's significant transportation upgrades totaling somewhere around our estimates of $100 million included in the project plan. For those that aren't familiar with the site, there was actually a commissioned study by City Planning back in 2015 around what I commonly refer to as Ring Road around the site, the access road or service road that cuts through the park. The access road or service road that cuts through the park. Ultimately, it determined that there's significant infrastructure upgrades that are needed just to support the current levels of volume there. And some of those are based on the fact that it sits along some flood plains and wetlands, so that area does flood significantly. It's a significant life safety issue for us today. We'll be improving that roadway to city DOT standards where there'll be two full moving lanes, parking lane, sidewalks, you know, life safety, cross pedestrian crosswalks, et cetera. We've also got a commitment for two MTA bus stops, one where the EDC parking lot is to the left of our development site, and then one within our development site, as we anticipate about thirty-five-hundred to four-thousand employees and a minimum of fifty percent or so of those likely would be able to take public transit. So, I've got a few just renderings of what that new roadway would look like. For those that are familiar, this is a much improved view coming in. Today, it's maybe eighteen, twenty feet wide, very little roadlining, any vegetation, no sidewalks or lighting. And then, this is, as you continue to go south, leading under the Whitestone Bridge, you can obviously see the integrated resort development in the background. But this will create safe pedestrian access under the bridge and essentially fully connect the east and west sides of the park for the first time, which doesn't exist today. The second aspect of the transportation improvements is really to the north of the site and ultimately benefits the city street, in particular Lafayette Avenue. So, today, if you're not familiar and you're coming off of I-678, you veer off to the right onto the service road, and if you want to come back south, either into the park or to get back on I-678, you have to make two lefts at Lafayette Avenue and go over the bridge over 678. That has significant, you know, significant congestion issues today as a bottleneck. And ultimately, we are proposing building a new overpass just to the south of that bridge whereby you would essentially yield over top of the highway, and we would be alleviating significant transportation volumes that are currently going over that bridge as well. It obviously would benefit our project. In addition, you can see there's a handful or so of traffic signals that we've worked with our transportation and engineering experts that would need to be retimed. And there's two small areas, one on Lafayette, one on Ring Road, whereby we are proposing, in conjunction with DOT, of removing street parking as that causes a current bottleneck today. This is the, a better illustrative rendering, or at least zoomed in, you can see the new overpass to the south. The existing overpass would also be restriped. There would be two turning lanes instead of one to, you know, try and handle better the existing volumes. With that being said, we also... That's your time. I'm sorry, but you know what? We're going to have some questions for you, so...
That's fine.
And I, I was actually going to start here anyway, as it related to the parks...
Perfect.
Issues. So, let's, let's do that. You all have a few specific actions that you're seeking here: a map amendment, the demap parkland, mapping of a particular zoning district at C-84, and also the disposition of city-owned property. So, let's talk about the, the demapping of parkland. First of all, how much parkland are you proposing to, to demap? Is there any area where you are proposing to add additional parkland, which is not parkland today? Tell us what the net impact is of this proposal on parkland. Yeah, I think the, the net is around nineteen acres in total. The actual development site, where essentially the current clubhouse and parking lot is today, is about fifteen-point-seven acres. That's the, the heart of essentially where the building and the integrated resort would be built. The balance of that difference between the nineteen or so and the fifteen-point-seven is essentially currently the roadway that is not a city-mapped roadway that goes through the park. It's essentially just paved parkland today. That would be dedicated back to, to city DOT upon completion and us paying for those improvements. Relative to new parkland options, we do have two options that we control, you know, purchase agreement options that we've had on City Island. Those total somewhere in the seven to eight acres in total, depending on how you want to calculate riparian land, and are working to find other options in conjunction with the conversations we're having on the parkland replacement and parkland improvements with our local electeds, New York City Parks, et cetera. Okay, so let me just make sure I understand what, what you've said here. So, it's a, the demapping is of nineteen acres in total.
Roughly.
Roughly. And that includes parkland plus a park road, which functions as an access point, but would be a, as proposed here, a street instead of a park road?
Correct.
Okay. Now, just, just so I understand, so I understand the park road to street portion. Tell us about what is, the fifteen-point-seven acres is what today? Today, if you go back to the presentation, it's essentially probably ten or twelve of the fifteen-point-seven acres is parking lot. So, today, there's give or take three-hundred or so parking spaces that are paved there, right at the entrance to the golf course. Then, the remaining, you know, two to four acres is roughly pathways, the location where the clubhouse is, and there's about an acre where you practice your chipping and putting, if you're warming up or just going and using the facility for strictly practice. Ultimately, we will be building a new clubhouse in conjunction with this that will be on existing parkland within the licensed premises, i.e. where the golf course sits today. If you're familiar where that large berm sign is, that's where that new clubhouse will go. We'll be replacing all the parking. We have forty-six-hundred-plus parking spaces within our development itself and have committed to a permanent easement in perpetuity with New York City Parks for the concession. And then, the practice chipping, putting area, this is a Jack Nicklaus signature design course. We've been working with Nicklaus Design on that final location. We believe that that, and it's proposed as of right now, we're just working on final sign-offs. That will go essentially to the east or to the right, if you're looking at the map in the slides, and to the west or to the left of ten T. It'll still be equivalent about an acre, again, on, on mapped parkland. Okay, so ten to twelve acres is parking lot today, but designated as parkland.
Correct.
Two to four acres is pathways that serve the, the golf course. Is that correct?
Pathways and clubhouse.
Okay, understood. And that is the, if I were to experience those two to four acres, I would experience them as the pathways and the clubhouse today. And in the future, I would experience it as new clubhouse and, and what?
And pathways.
And pathways, too.
The building is actually designed so you can still circumvent the site in golf carts itself, but also utilize it as a non-golf user.
Okay. And then, on the Ring Road issue, so that's, that's a park road that you're proposing becoming a DOT street. There is access today through Ring Road, correct?
Correct.
What's the relevance? Why is it important, from your perspective, that this be a street as opposed to a park road?
I think from a technical standpoint, and I'll let some of the other folks handle that if, if that's where this goes. I think today, because it's a mapped parkland, because it's mapped parkland, it does need to get converted. I think the ultimate decision was made through zoning that it would need to get converted and assigned essentially to city DOT. And in going back into the presentation, that roadway today struggles with some of the infrastructure that I mentioned, you know, the flooding. There's not enough parking there. It also, you know, doesn't have pedestrian access. There are significant improvements that were already needed.
Okay, I, I think I may be missing the benefit of the DOT street as opposed to park road as a technical legal matter, but that's, that may be for a follow-up here. Or Anita Laramont's here, so that's fun.
Hello, nice to see you all.
Hi, Anita. Welcome.
So, the, the difference is that DOT has standards that they apply to roads in terms of width of lanes, in terms of walking paths next to them, signage at the beginning and end, and lights. And in order for this to be maintained with the anticipation of a bit of incremental traffic, the thought was that it should be a DOT road, that they should maintain like they do any other New York City street. That really is the beginning and the end of it. And we worked with them a lot on the width of the lanes, et cetera, turning radiuses, et cetera. So, this road now will conform to the standards that New York City is used to in its roads. That's really what's happening.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you very much. Okay, let me, let me go to my colleagues for questions. Let me see who's got questions for you all. Commissioner Soria.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation. At the review session, I was wondering if it would be possible to see a cross-section of the proposal to see sandy inundation levels, but also the current one-hundred-year flood plain as well as the projections and see the rise. Is that, is that possible?
Yeah, we should be able to follow up on that, Jess. I believe you can speak to that in more detail.
Great, thank you. And if you can also discuss some of the strategies that you're planning to adapt the building to, or anticipate those levels of flooding, that'd be great.
Jess, can you cover that, please?
Yes, so the, the current flood level is at around elevation seven. We have established our lowest level at elevation ten, and if, and that's at the foundation level. We're actually at fifteen with the new one-hundred-year, one-hundred years from now at, I believe, twelve. We're, we're still well above that flood level, so we've anticipated that. I think we can go as high as twenty with our current design.
Thank you. One quick follow-up, just to, to make sure I understood. You're using the twenty-one-hundred, the maximum projections, or which, which one?
We're, we're using the current, but we're designing to be compatible with the twenty-one-hundred.
And, and how far away, I mean, I, I think you are far away enough, but I'm, I'm wondering if you can share some documentation to see how far away are you from the velocity zone? Sounds like you're, you're, you're not in the velocity zone, but it's quite near, and I want to understand what's the impact of storm surge. So, if you can also share with us what was the sandy inundation observed, that would be great.
Right. The elevation on the south side or on the, on the river side of our project is around thirty, between thirty and thirty-five. So, we're, we're well above and we think safe from all of those factors right now.
Thank you. That's good to hear. If you don't mind sharing some information on that so we can follow up, that'd be great. A cross-section would be so useful.
We'll, we'll be glad to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me go to Commissioner Benjamin.
Hi, just a quick question about the rest of the, the park, particularly along the shoreline, since the parking that was there was and could be used for people who wanted to go to the shoreline. Is that correct?
Correct. Are you, are you talking about, let's say, a small lot, maybe twelve or fifteen spaces that you access just to the, I guess, the east of the bridge?
It was on the, the drawing with the Ring Road leading to it.
Yes. That, that will still exist. It will be fully accessible.
Will any efforts be made to make that more accessible to people who might want to use the park as opposed to gambling? Or will the parking lot be enlarged? Will it be made easier to get down to the, the shore? Can you talk about that?
So, at this point, we're still in conceptual design, but we can absolutely incorporate some of those, those thoughts and concepts. I know from what we've heard from Parks, Parks has asked us to make that area more inviting, as today it's, I don't want to say it's more industrial, but it almost, you know, you almost don't, don't know it exists today. So, I can appreciate that comment and hear you when we can incorporate that.
And with signage somewhere, have you thought about that, that people aren't going to know from the other side of, of the highway that there is something there that they can go to? So, if you, when you come back, if you could also talk about how you're going to let the public know of this new opportunity?
Absolutely.
And what that opportunity will look like, how people will engage with it, will there be restrooms? I mean, I think that this is a public park, and there should be some benefit, not just to the golf course and to Bally's, but also to the public's ability to access the park.
One-hundred, no, one-hundred percent. So, we've been talking with Parks about connecting along the waterway under the bridge in addition to also connecting along the roadway under the bridge. So, it didn't get to that portion, but those parkland improvements would be included in our plan. So, there would be pedestrian access along the waterway to get from east to west, not just under where the road is, under the bridge.
And I'm assuming bike access also.
Correct.
Do you, you may not have had time to do it. Do you have that conceptual plan in any of your...
I don't have it rendered in here, but I believe it is in the text within the presentation.
Okay, okay. And if this proposal is not adopted as one of the three winning proposals, will any of these improvements to the park still be done?
No, no. Our proposal is predicated upon awarding of a license by the New York State Gaming Commission.
Uh-huh, that's pretty definite. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I go to Commissioner Marine and Crowell, let me just note for people who wish to be heard on this item today, if you are experiencing any issues registering online, you can call the phone assistance line at eight-eight-eight-seven-eight-eight-zero-zero-nine-nine. The meeting ID is six-one-eight-two-three-seven-seven-three-nine-six. When they ask for your participant ID, you can just push pound to skip it. Passcode is one. A member of our team will get you signed up. You can also call two-one-two-seven-two-zero-three-four-zero-five if you're having difficulties, okay? Just wanted to make that quick public service announcement. Let me now go to Commissioner Marine.
Thank you, Chair. So, first of all, thank you for answering that question for Commissioner Benjamin, because I actually had posed the same question on Monday. But, you know, we, you mentioned that it's in the text. If a rendering could be provided, that would be appreciated. I think that there are several concerns that the community has as well that we can alleviate by providing them some visuals so they could understand. You also show on slide eleven a view from Harding Avenue, and you discuss the trees, your architect does, about how they're going to grow and obstruct the view of the casino. It would be beneficial if you had a rendering as well there so that we could understand how those trees would block the casino view and how the folks on Harding would not be experiencing that larger mass at the end of Harding. And then, on slide sixteen, where you discuss the road widening, I think you did answer the question about any alienating of parkland. When it's not, it's actually be added as park but as streets. So, I think that those, oh, the other one was the crossover from west to east on the Hutch.
The overpass?
Yeah, I, you know, the, thank you for the rendering. I also requested that. I didn't know that if it was done before or not, but thank you. The, for me, I think what's more beneficial is understanding how that interacts with the Hutchinson and the exiting and entering. So, if maybe an enlargement of that area could be provided, that would be very helpful.
We could, we could do that. I can have, I have some of our traffic folks, if you'd like, a brief minute, just conversation about it.
That'd be great. I mean, that, to understand it in concept, but to see it visually, I think would also, again, benefit the community so they could understand that was one of their biggest concerns.
Sure. The overpass that's being proposed right now will be a one-way. It will take traffic from the east side, heading north on the service road, to the west side, heading south on the service road. It would primarily bypass the two signals at Lafayette.
Correct.
And that's one of the main benefits of that, is the local dissection impacts will be mitigated because the traffic will be widening the signal. We are right now in discussions with city DOT, state DOT, to figure out the exact specifics of what the design and the operations would be, but that's the primary way to operate primarily.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I just happen to think that, that explaining that, drawing it so people can visualize it would actually be of benefit. Again, it was one of the biggest concerns that the community had, although I don't see it as much, but I would appreciate it.
We could definitely add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, let me see if there are other questions here. Commissioner Soria.
Just really just a clarification question, two, two quick questions. At the point in time in the presentation, we got to the parks improvements, and that's sort of when the buzzer went off. But, and I was taking notes on the discussion you were having with the chair. I just wanted to get a, really a clearer sense of the totality of the parks, the universe of, of parkland that is impacted, and what will be there under the proposal. So, it was fifteen acres, and it was a nineteen-acre net. So, what, and I saw in the presentation quickly, while the screen, the slide was up, that you're working with the local elected officials and parks on what those sort of improvements might be. So, I guess I'm just trying to find out with what we're starting with, and, and that's on the, on the acreage, we'll say. that's on the on the acreage, we'll say, and then what we expect to end with under the proposal, so that we at least know a number, since we're not seeing the actual improvements, we're not seeing what's going to be there, because those things are going to be worked out as this process continues.
Right.
So can you just fill in some of those blanks?
Absolutely. So I think you're spot on on the acreage. Um the development site, again, is fifteen point seven acres, difference getting to roughly the nineteen, depending on how it's finally mapped, and we're near sign off on that. Um we'll get you to the difference. All of that is today within Ferry Point Park. Uh we are awaiting a final valuation from DCASTs uh to better understand what that valuation lands on uh today. Uh we are estimating it's in the realm of somewhere around a hundred million dollars based on comps. Uh with that being said, we've got two parcels under option on City Island. One is about three-ish, one is about four-ish, plus or minus. Um so that will get you to replacement options incorporating about seven-ish acres. I think the the rough value on those is somewhere between fifteen and twenty million dollars unimproved. And then we understand that there's significant obvious needs within Ferry Point Park, and quite frankly, you know, a vast majority uh of the conversations we've had, folks think that because that is the most affected parkland, it is the affected parkland, that they should have the most benefit. So some of the projects that we've included, obviously, pedestrian connection along the waterway. Um you know, the roadway improvements aren't incorporated in the parkland improvements, but those are, you know, great improvements for the area.
Bless you.
Uh bless you. Um providing new uh bathrooms. Uh I think there's only two sets of bathrooms uh within the park, and at peak that the park really needs it. Uh potentially paving the EDC lot. Um there's, I think, six or eight uh soccer fields to the south, as well as some cricket fields that would need to be uh re-improved uh or re-surfaced or resodded. Um there's a a nine eleven uh memorial that we've potentially incorporated into the project plan, new pedestrian pathways and lighting throughout the park. Um you're trying to cut back on some of the overgrowth um that is there. Um these are all general examples. I think that the biggest ones that will definitely have to happen, though, are the fields will will need to be redone, as that's the vast majority of the users that are going to that park outside of using the pathways.
I I and thank you for that. And the the clarification on that's very helpful. So I I had the numbers right. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something on this. The the second, what I think is hopefully a quick question, which Ms. Larmont mentioned in terms of the roadway, because it's a DOT roadway, they will maintain and manage that roadway too. So, you know, everything from plowing to whatever road, okay. And are there any private roadways that are incorporated into this plan? It's all, it would all be public roads. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. We go to Commissioner Gold on Zoom.
Hi, thank you. Um also, a couple of points of follow up. One, just uh to follow up on Commissioner Cerula's question, um and just to verify. So if the license doesn't come, does the DOT transition still happen, or that doesn't happen at all in the roadway?
No, 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 this is all 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 one package.
Okay. And then two, um I guess you've heard it from uh some of the other commissioners, including Commissioner Marine, but um you look at what's out there. Obviously, the community concern and the environmental is a lot around traffic. And so we've heard uh some on some of the uh things you're planning to do, but it would be helpful if you could speak a little bit. I'm going to give you the opportunity to speak a little more fully on any other mitigation plans that you have for the potential traffic that that this would bring.
I'll let um I'm going to let Satya maybe touch upon that, but I guess, you know, one thing I do want to note, um you know, we obviously take traffic very seriously. We know that, you know, at peak times, and particularly in the summer at this location, there are um, you know, there are issues that we believe, you know, a lot of these improvements will actually help address uh in existing condition. I will tell you, we are also a twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five business, uh whereby we don't have a flood of, you know, four or five thousand people that come in all at once and leave all at once. You know, I I call it a, you know, a steady drip as opposed to an open faucet. Um this is not the equivalent of using, you know, one of our counterparts in the Bronx. This is not the equivalent, Yankee Stadium, where we have thirty thousand people coming in an hour or two before and leaving. Uh our our max capacity is is a fraction of of what that would be. Um and I'll let Satya um cover what's been incorporated into our project plan.
Thank you, Chris. So just to reiterate what Chris said, in terms of traffic and mitigation, there is a plan to do a traffic monitoring plan that is included in the proposal, which is when the site is operational, there will be in coordination with City DOT, an extensive data collection effort to make sure that the future forecasted trips and such, and come up with additional measures as needed in 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 coordination with DOT. There have been discussions, as Chris mentioned earlier, with the MTA, with increased possible bus service to the park, and that would potentially have some opportunities to mitigate some of the traffic impacts. Um additionally, we had initial discussions with EDC. Um they do not have any plans at this point to um augment the ferry service, but in the future, we don't know. That may be something that might provide some additional options to mitigate some of the impacts. So in addition to what Chris described in terms of all the improvements in terms of infrastructure, there are some measures potentially on the demand side that are being proposed that'll be under consideration later on in the project to help mitigate some of the traffic.
Got it. And um I assume is this anticipated to be a twenty-four hour facility?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
Okay. Um got it. So so some of that can help, but I assume uh the ferry piece of it would be limited to the peak hours, um I imagine. Um okay, and then and then one more, um anticipated timeline to build, like basically, the concern in thinking being what the construction impact is um on the community and the neighborhood, how long does that run over?
Yeah, I believe I believe our our application incorporates a twenty-nine thirty build year. Uh as it sits today, the state's essentially, you know, told us and publicized that they are, they have the goal of making selections by the end of this calendar year. Ultimately, you know, I think based on all of the other approvals that will be needed, permits and whatnot, uh construction would be expected to start sometime in twenty twenty-seven.
Got it. Got it. So about three, about three years potentially.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Um I uh I don't see um more questions for you from the panel. So thank you very much to you and the applicant team for being with us today, and we're going to move on with the rest of the public hearing. So thanks.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, um I'm next going to call up Karen Argenti, who I believe is with us on Zoom, to be followed by David Abreu, who I believe is with us here.
Karen, are you able to unmute in Zoom?
Okay, now I can unmute. Okay, that was interesting. Hi, um my name is Karen Argenti. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Bronx Council for Environmental Quality. We are a fifty-four-year-old Bronx nonprofit, all-volunteer environmental organization with no staff. I cut my teeth on environmentalism during the alienation process. In twenty-two thousand one, when the highest court in New York State reaffirmed the inclusion of parkland under the public trust doctrine, declaring that our courts have time and again reaffirmed the principle that parkland is impressed with the public trust, requiring specific legislative approval before it can be alienated or used for an extended period for non-park purposes. I come before you today to speak about the public trust doctrine and how your calendar item number just um is disingenuous and fatally flawed. It doesn't even mention alienation. Even your project omits alienation process in the U L E R P and the D E I S. Explain how rezoning a park prior to the alienation process works. Parks have has no zoning. The New York State Department of Environmental Conservation considers a municipal resolution requesting parkland alienation legislation an action under CECA. The initial decision to sell, lease, or convey, or change the use of parkland is also part of the action subject to CECA. CECA analysis should be commenced as early as possible in the decision-making process. State parks suggests that a municipality vote on the CECA resolution prior to voting on the alienation resolution request and on the resolution for the home municipal home rule request. Furthermore, New York State Parks has an alienation handbook with such questions that we almost heard today by the other commissioners. Um what are the current uses of the parkland? How much of the park public rely on the parkland for recreation activities? Are there adequate recreativities within the municipality currently in parkland in question? If the parkland is alienated, is replacement land being proposed if the parkland in question is diverted to another use? If so, what is the location of the substitute parcel? Will it accommodate the current uses of the parkland? What is the, it goes on and on. The role of the public during an alienation action should comply with the State Environmental Quality Review Act process. Environmental review ensures the public a meaningful role in the process before it's a done deal. The E I S transparency provides an opportunity to consider potential significant adverse environmental impacts, to weigh alternatives, and to minimize or mitigate any environmental damage potentially caused by those actions.
Time?
I suggest a new U L E R P and.
Okay, Ms. Argenti, thank you very much. Uh thank you for being with us. Um uh I am going to call next David Abreu. Um and I just will again note, thank you for joining us, Mr. Abreu. If anybody's having any difficulty registering online, call our phone assistance line at eight 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 seven eight eight zero zero nine nine. The meeting ID is six one eight two three seven seven three nine six. And push pound to skip ahead when they ask for the participant ID. Passcode is one. Our team will help you get signed up. You could also call alternatively two one two seven two zero three four oh five. Sorry to keep you waiting. Mr. Abreu, welcome.
Of course. Thank you. Good morning. Uh my name is David Brew, and I'm the Clean Water Advocacy Specialist at Save the Sound, a nonprofit environmental organization advocating for the protection and improvement of the entire Long Island Sound region. We represent thousands of members across the region, including many in the Bronx. Uh thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Um I like to speak specifically on the draft environmental impact statement and expand on the potential environmental impacts uh and insufficient mitigation uh that we've identified thus far. Save the Sound believes the currently proposed stormwater mitigation solutions and wastewater analysis are insufficient, and the commission should require these uh to be explicitly stated in the D E I S to inform decision-making. Um as we know, uh stormwater and wastewater are two of the most, are two of the most significant pollution sources impacting New York City's waterways today. And this project proposes continuation of stormwater discharge into Westchester Creek and the Upper East River, except much more stormwater is expected to be generated as a result of the increase in impervious surfaces from the casino site and the expansion of Ring Road. Both waterways are listed as impaired per New York State Department of Environmental Protections twenty eighteen, Section three oh three D list uh of impaired waters. Yet the word impaired does not appear once in the D E I S's Stormwater and Wastewater chapter. Bally's must also comply with New York City's Unified Stormwater Rule, which prioritizes green infrastructure as the primary mitigation solution for new developments. And the general public needs to see the details on those specific green infrastructure practices and pretreatment solutions uh that will be implemented to allow adequate time to comment on them. Furthermore, the project will introduce additional wastewater to the combined sewer overflow system on Emerson Avenue. A dry weather analysis was performed on wastewater flows to the Hunts Point Wastewater Treatment Facility. As many of us are aware, rainfall and flooding levels are expected to increase in the city in the coming years, further overburdening the sewer system and leading to discharges of untreated wastewater to our water bodies. Save the Sound recommends that the commission also request a wet weather analysis be performed to understand sewer capacity during rain events. Save the Sound also shares the serious concerns expressed by the local community with construction and ground intrusion activities on the former landfill where the project is proposed and where ongoing monitoring suggests uh contamination persists, particularly the piercing of the landfill cap, soil vapor migration, um and the potential leaching of contaminants and toxins. We look forward to expanding on that in our written comments. Uh for these reasons, and those my colleague will also be describing after me, uh Save the Sound urges disapproval of this project based on the these inadequacies of in the D E I S. Um and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let me move on to Robert Fanuzzi on Zoom, followed by Dara Ilawski here in the room. Commissioner Benjamin, do you have a question for?
Yes, I was just wondering if Mr. Abreu could send us, the commissioners, a copy of his written comments, once you have them, particularly about your concern about the wet weather analysis for the waste treatment facilities. Thank you.
He said yes, for the record. Thank you. Um okay, just wanted to say it into the microphone. Okay, let's uh let's go to Robert Fanuzzi.
Robert, are you able to unmute in Zoom?
Thank you. I apologize for this delay. Um I too am a representative and board member and president of the Bronx Council for Environmental Quality. Um and I offer my comments today in preliminary form um that address the con, the D E I S within the context of the state legislator legislature, parkland alienation to come, and the peril of proceeding without any information about its cost or possible benefits. Without that information, the D E I S is fatally flawed because it is unable to provide the CPC with an accurate assessment of casino construction. BCQ is champions of water quality, stormwater management, and green infrastructure. We're responsible for urging DEP towards its historic daylighting project. We sweat over historic increases in city imperviousness. Can there really be no impact from the seventy-one percent impervious coverage protected in this study area? Compliance with the Uniform Stormwater Rule, as is stated in the D E I S, is merely the law. That compliance does not provide the CPC with an assessment of stormwater management measures. We urge you to attach conditions for adding the botanical features available under the Uniform Stormwater Rules to offset the impact of seventy-one percent impervious coverage in the study area. We further note that as this project is currently planned, stormwater will discharge directly into the East River and Westchester Creek at the very moment when New York City DEP is piloting a new category of water quality attainment for the Harlem River that will incorporate allowances for the contaminants of wet weather discharge. The response to our comments in the drafts go of work correctly note that New York State DEC conducts the permitting for this M F four, MS four discharge. But nothing in the D E I S ensures the sustainability of waterfront development of this size. In fact, it affirms the escalating impacts of discharge on citywide water quality attainment. Given the stakes for community recreational access and primary contact, and the goals of the DCP Waterfront Revitalization Program, zero discharge should be your goal, and the E I S should provide you with a roadmap towards it. In its written statement to come, BCQ will offer detailed analysis of the no-impact findings in the analysis of open space, natural resources, hazards, materials, water, sewer infrastructure, air quality, greenhouse kitchen, um and construction. We have a long history of U L E R P participation in this area. But as my colleague Karen Argenti noted, we are also creatures of the alienation process of the croat, of the Van Cortlandt Park and the Croton Filtration Park. And we find here that without knowledge of the alienation agreement, you cannot correctly assess the impact of lost parkland. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fanuzzi. Uh next up is Dara Ilawski, followed by Lisa Sorin on Zoom. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Dara Ilawski. I'm the New York Staff Attorney at Save the Sound. You heard from my colleague David a few minutes ago. He introduced us. Um thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. I urge you to disapprove the Bally's Casino and Hotel Complex at Ferry Point Park because the draft environmental impact statement fails to adequately disclose the likely adverse environmental impacts of this project, identify effective and feasible mitigation measures, or. or analyze a range of reasonable alternatives, among other deficiencies. It therefore cannot provide the basis for the commission's approval. I'll give a brief overview of some of our concerns on top of David's, which we will elaborate on in writing. One of our biggest concerns about this project is the loss it would impose on irreplaceable waterfront parkland in Ferry Point Park. Public parkland is an extremely valuable resource, especially in the city, and it should continue to benefit the general public, not private corporations. This complex would mean the loss of at least 17 acres of city parkland and rare open space beside the East River so that Bally's can build a 3.1 million gross square foot casino and hotel complex to which the local community has expressed clear opposition. Save the Sound does not believe that the substitute parkland or parkland improvement projects which Bally's has vaguely alluded exist to adequately balance this loss, especially for the nearby communities most deeply indirectly affected. Before any vote, the commission should require Bally's to provide clear, binding, public commitments specifically identifying substitute parkland and capital improvement projects it intends to pursue. Otherwise, this proposal will move forward before we can fully understand the consequences for our communities or the environment. Bally's has also failed to consider the required range of reasonable alternatives. The DEIS offers only the no-action and no-unmitigated-impact alternatives, ignoring alternatives that reduce the project's footprint, including by removing components not germane to the project's purpose, for example. Save the Sound objects in particular to the extension of Bally's license to operate the golf course being incorporated as part of the proposed action. The license is set to expire in 2035, relatively soon. This means that the community and New York City Parks could begin a process to envision alternative, family-friendly uses for this precious public park space and see them begin to be implemented in only 10 years' time, maybe less. But the range of such potential uses will be significantly curtailed if the Bally's proposal goes through as written to presuppose the continued operation of the golf course indefinitely. The alternative's analysis and so that the EIS is therefore incomplete and cannot support an approval from this commission. I'd also like to briefly note, we also have concerns that we'll elaborate on in writing regarding the analysis of effects on disadvantaged communities. The air quality analysis in particular is based on using baselines in communities with their own likely higher pollution burdens than the area most closest to the park, making it seem as though there's not as much of a worsening of air quality. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us. Okay, next up is Lisa Sorin on Zoom.
Lisa, are you able to unmute in Zoom?
I am now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And good morning, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to testify this morning. My name is Lisa Sorin, President of the Bronx Chamber of Commerce. The Bronx Chamber of Commerce is critical in helping local businesses in the Bronx grow, thrive, and remain competitive. The Bronx is often historically underfunded. That's why projects like Bally's proposed resort and casino at Ferry Point are so important. They represent a real opportunity to bring investment, jobs, and economic vitality to our borough. Bally's Corporation has shown itself to be more than just a developer. It has emerged as a thoughtful partner to the Bronx from workforce development conversation and meetings with local stakeholders. Bally's has demonstrated a clear interest in aligning its visions with the needs and priorities of our neighborhoods. Bally represents a unique opportunity to enhance the Bronx's status as a vibrant destination for both residents and visitors. The development promises to create thousands of jobs during the construction phase and many more permanent positions upon completion, providing employment opportunities across a range of skills, skill levels. This is particularly important to our borough, where job creation remains a top priority. This project will spur economic growth, attract tourism, and drive new investments in the surrounding area. Local hotels, restaurants, and retailers will definitely benefit from increased foot traffic, while the development will generate significant tax revenue to support public services and infrastructure. With world-class entertainment, dining, and recreational spaces, it will also create new cultural and leisure opportunities for our Bronx, enriching the social fabric of our community. We are confident that Bally's will serve as a catalyst for economic growth, job creation, and enhanced quality of life in the Bronx. For these reasons, the Bronx Chamber of Commerce fully supports this development project and urge you to approve this endeavor. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Sorin. Romario Rodriguez?
Good morning. How are you guys? My name is Romario Rodriguez, and I am a proud hospitality worker and a member of the Hotels and Games Council. I am here on behalf of my unit to testify to support the Bally's Casino Proposal. This project is an incredible opportunity for the Bronx and all of New York because it will create thousands of good-paying hospitality jobs just like mine. Bally's will be one of the largest employers in the Bronx, and now more than ever, hard-working New Yorkers need access to quality jobs with benefits, and this project will provide that. We urge you to approve this project, and thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for being with us. All right, next is Danielle Campbell. Welcome, Ms. Campbell, to be followed by Eddie Marrero and Marquez Payne, all here with us at 120 Broadway. Welcome.
Good morning. Okay, my name is Danielle Campbell, and I am here on behalf of Travel with CHAZ, a nonprofit organization. We are in favor of this project, the Bally's Casino. We believe it represents a major opportunity for economic investment in the Bronx, a borough that has been undeserved in terms of job creation and infrastructure development. Bally's proposal will generate thousands of good-paying union jobs, both in the construction and hospitality sectors, jobs that come with family sustaining wages, benefits, and long-term career opportunities for Bronx residents. Bally's has also shown real commitment to our community, as we have done several college tours for youth, consistent attendance and participation at local events, and by creating new job opportunities for families in the area. We understand that some may be wary of the large businesses entering our neighborhoods, but Bally's has maintained an open-door policy for us and from the start. They work with the community, not around it, and their willingness to engage consistently even prior to this project has made a meaningful difference. We believe in building together, and we respectfully urge the Department of the City of Planning to move this project forward as we see Bally's Ferry Point not only as a smart development decision, but as a powerful step towards building a more equitable, prosperous Bronx. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next is Eddie Marrero, followed by Marquez Payne, Vincent Albanese, and Lauren Patterson.
Good morning. My name's Eddie Marrero. I am a resident in district. Today, we stand at the crossroads of opportunity and transformation. The Bally's Casino Project isn't just another development, it's a game changer. At a time when families are struggling with rising costs and uncertainty, this project is our shot at real economic revival and long-term prosperity. Want you to picture this: thousands of well-paying jobs, construction workers, hospitality professionals, entertainers, retail workers. This project will fuel careers and financial security for generations, but that's not all. Bally's will pump millions into our local economy, funding schools, infrastructure, and essential services that keep our city thriving. This just isn't about a casino, it's about empowering our communities. Bally's is committed to investing in education, affordable housing, and recreation. That means funding for local schools, after-school programs, and job training. This project ensures that the Bronx doesn't just grow, it thrives, and I believe the commuting enhancement benefits is $650 million. And let's be clear, Bally's has already proven themselves to be a good neighbor. They provided a community shuttle bus, improving access and connectivity, and most recently, my understanding is that they've saved Preston High School by purchasing this property, fully refurbishing it, or at least committed to it, and leasing it back to the Sisters for just $1 a year for the next 25 years. I don't know many businesses who would do that. This project brings more than prosperity. It brings justice, economic justice for the working-class families who need opportunities, social justice for communities who too often have been ignored, and environmental justice for a borough disproportionately burdened by pollution and climate risk. For too long, poor and middle-class families in the Bronx have been forgotten, left behind, or left out. This project says, "Not anymore." It's a shining example of what happens when the private and public sector come together for the betterment of society. The scale of investment Bally's is bringing in this kind, we'd expect from the federal government, yet that support too often skips over our borough. But Bally sees us. They believe in us, they've invested in us, and this is a win for all of us. Bally's will work with city leaders to implement transportation improvements that keep traffic flowing smoothly, and for homeowners, studies have shown that projects like this actually increase property values, boosting wealth for local families and businesses alike. This is our moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marrero. We appreciate you being with us. Thank you. Okay, Marquez Payne, Vincent Albanese, Lauren Patterson. I will note, if anybody wishes to be heard on this item, now is a good time to sign up. We're getting close to the end.
Hey, thank you. Good morning. My name is Marcus Payne. I'm from the Bronx. So, as a Bronxite and a community member and an entrepreneur, I support the Bally's Community Casino Proposal at Ferry Point. I've worked in the Bronx for a long time, most of my career, Bronx Chamber of Commerce. I've ran a business improvement district, Southern Boulevard bid, and I've seen the benefits that the Bronx has when we have a thriving economic engine supporting us. I believe it's the good nature, also the good-nature agreement will have an impact on the borough in a really big way. The community benefits agreement will help as we increase foot traffic in the borough as well as increase community spaces, so I believe it'll be a big deal for the Bronx as a whole, not only from the community groups that I run, because I think it's cool to have a, you know, high-level community space that we can bring people and have in hotels and that nature, but I think the fund that is created from the revenue will help support projects throughout our boroughs for years to come. The benefits are, in addition to the quality jobs that are going to be proposed, not only in building it, but also the jobs that'll be there for people to work, but I think just what it will do to the waterfront space. You know, I'm from the Bronx. I drive across, travel throughout the city all the time. I'm coming into the White Stone just to look and see what that could be. I think would be amazing. People are always excited about it. And also, I think just to the gentleman who came before me, the supporter of Preston High School, and I think what they've done, I think that builds really good credit in the borough, and I think it's an exemplary example of what a community benefits agreement should look like. So, I appreciate the opportunity to improve the borough as a whole. I think it would be great for the Bronx, and I think it'll keep the borough excited and it'll help give a real big boost. So, with you guys' support, I'll hope to see that go forward. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Payne. Appreciate you being here. Okay, Vincent Albanese?
Hey, how are you? Vincent Albanese, on behalf of Launa, Labor's International Union, North America, I am the Executive Director of our Political Action Committee, as well as the Director of our Policy and Public Affairs for our organizing fund. The laborers represent over 40,000 members across the state of New York. Thousands of those members live in the Bronx and specifically in the site, in the location around this project. Unfortunately, many of those members in the Bronx are unable to work in the Bronx and are forced to travel to other boroughs and other parts of the state in order to find the good-paying union jobs that are created as being part of the laborers' union. This is an unprecedented opportunity that we've never had in the Bronx, not just for our existing members, but for the future members of our union, and the future folks in the Bronx that would finally have an opportunity to work near where they live and become part of the laborers' union. For all these reasons, we support this project fully. We have other, we have members that wanted to be here today, but because of the timing of this hearing, they'll be submitting written testimony. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Albanese. Okay, next up, Lauren Patterson.
My name is Lauren Patterson. Represent some of the organizers and people that work actively in the community. I hear a lot about the financial, the money benefit. I like to talk more about the opportunities. Sometimes when people see new businesses around or new structure, they come up with new ideas, start a new business. They find a way to restart something. They find a way to connect with somebody new. I speak on behalf or in the benefit of this project because some of the guys I deal with on a day-to-day basis don't have those opportunities to restart. I actively work with individuals who are justice-impacted and their families are justice-impacted, and some, this is an opportunity, and some of them see this as an opportunity to come up with new ideas or start fresh, or their second chance, and this might be an opportunity that brings them there in a positive way. So for that, I speak on behalf. Let's make this happen, all right? Many blessings, everybody.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being with us. Okay, I'm going to give a final call here for members of the public who wish to be heard on calendar 21, 22, and 23, the Bally's Ferry Point map amendment. Filibustering just for a moment, just to be certain. Okay, all right. Seeing no other members of the public wishing to be heard on this item, I will close the hearing on calendar 21 to 23. Madam Secretary, back to you.
Thank you, Chair. Before we close the hearing on calendar numbers 21 through 23, please, the record will remain open through 5:00 PM on Monday, May 5th, to receive written comments on the testimony.
Great. Thank you. Sorry, I did not make that announcement. Let us see if there is other business before the commission today.
No, Chair. There is no other business before the commission for the public meeting, but I do have some public information to share. For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the NYC Engage portal, through DCP's website, or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, 120 Broadway, 31st floor, New York, New York, 10271. The time now is 11:24.
Great. Thank you very much. And with that, this public meeting is now adjourned. Welcome now to the special review session of the City Planning Commission of April 23rd. Madam Secretary, I'm going to turn to you to get this started.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, and welcome to the City Planning Commission's Special Review Session for Wednesday, April 23, 2025. The time now is 11:24, and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is the certification of a zoning map amendment in the Brooklyn Community District 1. Presenting for the first time to the commission is Nicholas Michael.
All right, Nicholas, welcome. Good to see you here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Or good morning, sorry.
Good morning.
Okay. So, good morning, Chair Grotnick and Commissioners. Today, I'm presenting the 74 Bogart Street rezoning. This is a private application by 74 Bogart Street LLC for a zoning map amendment from an M12 to an M14A in order to facilitate the construction of a 240,000-square-foot fine art storage facility. This project area is located in East Williamsburg, just south of the North Brooklyn IBZ. It is bound by Bogart Street to the west, Ingraham Street to the north, Morgan Avenue to the east, and Harrison Place to the south. The project area consists of one tax lot that takes up all of Block 3084 and is coterminous with the development site, and shares the lot with a 2.0 FAR self-storage facility, which is also owned by the parent company of the applicant. Across Bogart Street to the west is Justice Gilbert Ramirez Park and the entrance to the Morgan Avenue L subway station, which also has entrances on Morgan Avenue, catty-corner to the site to the south. The surrounding area is well-served by public transit and is located within the inner transit zone. Along with the Morgan Avenue L, the B60 bus line has stops on Morgan Avenue connecting Williamsburg to Canarsie, and the B57 bus line stops four blocks... Williamsburg to Canarsie, and the B-57 bus line stops four blocks south of the project area, near the Morgan Avenue-Fleshing Avenue intersection, connecting Red Hook to Massbeth. The built character of the area is quite mixed. There are a number of two-story warehouses in the immediate vicinity, including across Ingraham Street to the north. In addition, there are some loft buildings being used for a variety of uses, such as a four-story loft building across Harrison Place that is being used for commercial uses, including several art studios. In addition, there are numerous lots being used for open storage, parking, and cement mixing, such as across Bogart Street and Morgan Avenue. Finally, there are a number of legal non-conforming residential uses, mostly in two-story homes and converted lofts. I mentioned the project area surrounded by a mix of uses, including industrial, legal non-conforming residential, open storage, and commercial, including some restaurants. The surrounding area is mostly zoned for industrial use. The project area itself and most of its surrounding blocks are zoned M-12. Southwest from the project area, across Morgan Avenue, begins a light industrial M-11 zone. And north of the project area, across Johnson Avenue, is a heavy industrial M-31 zone that is part of the North Brooklyn IBZ. Two blocks away from the project area, past Justice Gilbert Ramirez Park, is the beginning of a residential R-6 zone that extends further into East Williamsburg. Here are some photos of the site today. This is looking east from Bogart Street towards the project area. As you can see, the site of the proposed development is being used as commercial vehicle storage, leased currently to FedEx. This view is looking down Ingraham Street, along the northbound of the lot. On the left, you can see some of the built context of the immediate area, including a two-story industrial-use warehouse and some legal non-conforming residential. This view is looking directly south at the mid-block of the project area. I want to draw the Commission's attention to this parking lot and zoning and loading area that is serving the CubeSmart. This will, according to the proposed development, remain in use as such, serving as a space in between buildings. You can also see across the street the built context to the south of the project area, including some two-to-three-story legal non-conforming residential, as well as that large four-story loft building that is mostly being used for commercial and arts use. This video, this view is directly across the project area, looking directly north from Harrison Place. You can see some of the taller context on the block immediately to the north of the project area. And this final photograph shows the view facing east down Harrison Place. On the right, you can see some more of the built context, as well as the grates above the Morgan Avenue L station. This is a rendering of the proposed development, looking southeast from the corner of Bogart and Ingraham Streets, roughly where the second photo I showed you is taken. The proposed development is a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-square-foot fine art storage facility, which will rise to approximately one-hundred-and-eighteen feet or seven stories and have a floor-area ratio of 3.0. There would be no new parking added. However, the facility would contain four required accessory-loading berths, two with access from Ingraham Street and two with access from Harrison Place, with new curb cuts on each street, and would eliminate the existing curb cut along Bogart Street. The existing 2.0 self-storage facility on the eastern edges of the project area would remain in place. With the proposed fine art storage facility, the FAR across the project area would now be 5.0 FAR. To facilitate this development, the applicant seeks a whole-block rezoning from M-12 to M-14A. The applicant owns the entire project area, so no non-applicant-owned properties would be affected. The project area is located in a growth district identified by DCP's North Brooklyn Industry and Innovation Plan, due to its proximity to transit and mix of uses presently there. M-14A is a contextual district that was created as part of the Tax Amendment for City of Yes for Economic Opportunity. These districts allow for a maximum of 5.0 FAR for commercial and industrial uses, as opposed to the 2.0 FAR allowed for commercial-industrial use by the existing M-12 zoning, and are meant to encourage loft-style developments. The uses permitted would not change, with light industrial and most commercial being permitted. The maximum base height in an M-14A district is one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet, with a maximum building height of one-hundred-and-fifty-five feet. This site is over twenty thousand square feet, so it could also take advantage of a 25% increase in max height for flexibility. The existing M-12 district has a much lower base height of sixty feet or four stories, whichever is lower, and a max building height governed by a sky-exposure plane, starting at a twenty-foot setback with a vertical-to-horizontals ratio of 5.6 to one along narrow streets. In terms of parking, the M-14A has no parking requirements, whereas the M-12 requires one parking spot per two thousand square feet or per three employees, whichever yields a larger amount of spaces. This application requires a racial equity report, because it is seeking a change in non-residential floor area by two-hundred-thousand or more square feet. The project is located in the Bushwick Neighborhood Tabulation Area, which, according to the RER, has a much higher proportion of Hispanic-Latino residents compared to Brooklyn and New York City, and a lower proportion of white residents, black residents, and Asian residents than Brooklyn or New York City. As you can see in this graph, over the last ten years, there's been a notable growth in the white, non-Hispanic, and Asian, non-Hispanic populations, which have grown by one-hundred-and-forty-six percent and fifty-six percent respectively. This is compared to a 6% increase in the population of the NTA generally, and an 18% decrease in the black, non-Hispanic, and 16% decrease in the Hispanic-Latino populations in the neighborhood. This project is expected to create thirty jobs in the warehousing and storage categories as a result of the development facilitated by this application. These jobs have a median annual wage of thirty thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars, with sixteen point four percent of workers in this category across New York having a bachelor's degree or higher. Of those working in warehousing, forty-seven percent are Hispanic, nineteen point four percent are white, sixteen point two percent are black, and thirteen point three percent are Asian. In conclusion, this is a private application from Seventy-four Bogart LLC for a zoning map amendment from M-12 to M-14A to facilitate the development of a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand square-foot 3.0 FAR fine art storage facility. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. Wonderful first presentation. Congrats. Okay. Let me see if there are questions for you. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation. A really quick question regarding stormwater flooding. So clearly, the property is outside of the one-hundred-year floodplain, even the projections. It would be under the five-hundred-year floodplain in the twenty-one-hundred projections. But, you know, it's still close to the creek. I'm wondering if you can, if this has potential mitigation to address stormwater mitigation, on the other hand, has been discussed. Bogart, Knickerbocker seem to be compromised. And so I'm wondering if there's any city plans, has the EP mentioned anything? Is there anything that we can understand to potentially begin to address this?
To my understanding, I don't have any specifics. However, I do believe since the lot is greater than twenty thousand square feet, it will fall under the unified stormwater rule, is my understanding.
Okay. Yeah. If you can maybe follow up and just to confirm whether there are any other, any potential infrastructure improvements here that we can factor in, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mann.
Yeah, just a quick question. This is obviously a very increasingly busy part of Brooklyn from a pedestrian, retail, nightlife standpoint. I'm just curious, because this is a storage facility adjacent to another storage facility, if there's any effort at making sure the ground floor and the building itself doesn't totally read as a warehouse box, but has some transparency, maybe even some modest accessory retail? I know that's probably a bit of a stretch, but I just worry about, you know, again, the Morgan Avenue L stop becoming a kind of, the growth and development area kind of being extinguished by buildings that just don't add much to the street life.
Yeah. I totally hear those concerns. And while this is a zoning map amendment, so we don't, you know, it's just a zoning map amendment, we are getting renderings, updated renderings to show, from the applicant to show what the ground floor will look like, and they have been pretty responsive so far to our suggestions. I definitely hear that concern.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Mann's microphone is the one that's working at this juncture. So this item is now certified. Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Okay. The second item on our agenda is the certification of zoning map and zoning tax amendments in the Bronx Community District Eight. Our presenter is Yafit Shaffer-Soul.
Hi, Yafit. And I believe this, the microphones are working. They are red, but they are working for the benefit of all concerned. So your microphone is on. Welcome. The hot mic. That's right, Commissioner Benjamin. That's exactly what we call it. Okay. Go right ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Want to see if the presentation... Okay. Here we go. So this is a private application by Riverdale Garage Corp., requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone multiple lots on Block 3267 from an M-11 zoning district to an R-73 C-23 zoning district, and a zoning tax amendment to the ZR Appendix F to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area, to facilitate the development of a new thirteen-story residential building featuring two-hundred-and-twenty-six affordable dwelling units, as well as an accessory garage with one-hundred-and-eighty-eight parking spaces. The proposed project is located at 5602-5604 Broadway, in the Kingsbridge neighborhood of the Bronx Community District Eight. The area is well-served by public transit, elevated tracks serving the number-one subway line run above Broadway, with the 231st Street Station located at the intersection of West 231st Street and Broadway, two-hundred feet south of the project site. The project site is also served by several bus lines. Major corridors in the area include Broadway, which runs north-south along the project site, and West 231st Street, a major east-west commercial corridor. The site is also adjacent to the Major Deacon Expressway. There are several parks in the surrounding area, including Crescent Park, Cooney-Grower Fields, and Bailey Playground. Additionally, Van Cortlandt Park, the city's third-largest park at over a thousand acres, is located a short distance from the project site. Additionally, immediately east of the site is the location of the Putnam Avenue Greenway, a planned pedestrian and bike pathway that will stretch from West 230th Street to Van Cortlandt Park. The Commission may recall a recent project intended to facilitate the development of that greenway. Uses in the surrounding area are predominantly commercial, with mixed residential and commercial uses located along the Broadway and West 231st Street corridors. Further out, the surrounding area consists primarily of residential uses in multifamily buildings. The area immediately north of the proposed project consists mostly of lower-scale commercial buildings with a few mixed-use and residential buildings along Broadway. There are currently no manufacturing uses within these industrial districts. As shown in the blue, the area is home to a number of schools and religious institutions. There are one- and two-story commercial buildings along Broadway to the west of the rezoning area, as well as five-to-six-story and basement multifamily residential buildings further to the west. As far, as for the zoning, the project site is currently within an M-11 district that extends generally north between Broadway and the Major Deacon Expressway. R-6 zoning districts predominate south of the rezoning area, generally to the west and east. B-13 commercial overlays are mapped along Broadway and West 231st Street. South of the rezoning area are one-to-four-story mixed-use and commercial buildings. Shown here on an aerial view, the development site outlined in red is a flag-shaped interior lot made up of two lots. This irregularly shaped lot only has fifty-six feet of frontage along Broadway. This map more clearly shows the lots impacted by the proposed actions. The proposed rezoning area outlined in blue consists of several contiguous tax lots and portions of tax lots on Block 3267, including lots 90, 91, 93, 95, 97, 98, 99, and parts of lots 72, 75, 87, 88, and 110. Altogether, the rezoning area is approximately sixty thousand square feet. The proposed development covers two neighboring tax lots on Blocks 3267. Lot 90 is currently occupied by a partially vacant three-story commercial building with a total floor area of approximately four thousand square feet. Lot 91 is currently occupied by a one-hundred-and-eighty-five-space public parking garage that has been owned and operated by the applicant since 1985. Here you can better see the two side-by-side curb cuts that provide vehicular access to the cellar and ground floor levels of the garage on Lot 91. Each curb cut is approximately fifteen feet wide. This photo captures the other two- and three-story buildings that are within the proposed rezoning area to the north of the proposed development. These buildings are mostly commercial or mixed-use. The proposed actions would facilitate the development of a thirteen-story residential building with approximately one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand zoning square feet of residential space, equating to approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-six dwelling units, as well as one-hundred-and-eighty-eight accessory parking spaces. All of the proposed dwelling units would be income-restricted, with approximately one-hundred-and-eighty-one of the dwelling units affordable to households earning up to eighty percent of the area median income, and the remaining forty-five dwelling units would be income-restricted at ninety percent of the area median income. To achieve this, the applicant is proposing to rezone a portion of Block 3267 from M-11 to R-73 with a C-23 commercial overlay. R-73 districts allow for a modified maximum building height of one-hundred-and-eighty-five feet, although proposed development will only be built to one-hundred-and-thirty-five feet, or thirteen stories. Our three, R-73 zoning permits a maximum of 6.0 residential FAR. C-23 commercial districts are commercial overlay districts mapped within residential neighborhoods along streets that serve local retail needs. C-23 districts allow a range of local-serving commercial retail and service uses, such as grocery stores, restaurants, general stores, barber shops, laundromats, and other similar retail and services businesses. When mapped with R-73 districts, C-23 districts allow commercial uses to a maximum of 2.0 FAR. Accessory off-street parking is mandated for fifteen percent of dwelling units and may be waived for twenty-five or fewer spaces. Income-restricted units in the outer transit zone are exempt from parking requirements. All developments in R-73 districts are subject to quality housing regulations. The applicant also proposes zoning tax amendment to amend Appendix F to designate project areas as an MIH area, with options one and two. Option one requires twenty percent of units be available at an average of sixty percent AMI, and option two requires that thirty percent of the units must be reserved at an average of eighty percent AMI. The applicant plans to pursue option MIH, option one. Here's a plan of the proposed development, showing the location of the entrance for the proposed development, the residential portion, as well as a ramp to the cellar parking levels. Above the ground floor, the southern wing of the proposed building would be set back at around forty-four feet from Broadway. Access to the parking ramp would be provided by a new 20-foot curb cut. As you can see in the top edge of the site plan, isolated here, and in the rendering to the rear of the proposed building, the proposed redevelopment includes a private rear yard that abuts the Putnam Avenue Greenway. The applicant has prepared a racial equity report, and here are some of the findings. The proposed development would provide new housing units in the neighborhood that is considered a lower displacement risk than most of the neighborhoods to the south of the project area. The median household income for the project area is around sixty-two thousand six hundred dollars, which is slightly greater than the median income for the Bronx and less than that of New York City as a whole. Figure one shows the population of Riverdale, Fieldston, and Kingsbridge, and shows that it is predominantly Hispanic-Latino and white, with almost fifty percent of the population identifying as the former and thirty percent identifying as the latter. This is a slightly lower percentage of Hispanic-Latino residents than the overall Bronx, but higher percentage than that of New York City. Figure two shows the percent change in race and ethnicity from 2010 to 2020. The Asian and Hispanic-Latino populations experienced increases in this area of five percent and nineteen percent respectively, while the black population remained constant, and the white population in this area increased, experienced a fourteen percent decrease. This is compared to a forty-three percent increase in the Asian population, a one percent increase in the black population, a nine percent increase in the Hispanic-Latino population, and a fourteen percent decrease in the white population throughout the borough. Figure fourteen shows the percent change in housing supply and population from 2010 to 2022. Between that time period, housing production in this area increased by four percent, while the pop- while the population increased by 5%. That concludes my presentation for now. I'd happily take any questions at this time.
Thank you. I just want to clarify the numbers around the units and the breakdown. 226 overall.
Yes.
Our information indicated that 57 of those units would be set aside pursuant to Option 1 under MIH, but I believe you stated a different number at the beginning of your... Which would leave 22 minus 57, I believe, is 169. But you said 181 units.
So, the details, the exact breakdown will be further clarified in the presentation by the applicant. But the information that I had at this time was that it would be the total of 226.
Right.
And the 181. Yes. 181 of the dwelling units for 80% of the AMI, and 45 would be for the 9% of the AMI.
Yeah, which is less than the 57, so...
Yes. So, I will make sure that the information is consistent.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner Benjamin and Commissioner Marine?
Two questions. First, why was the decision made, and who made it, to include the 10 non-applicant-owned parcels in the rezoning?
So, that would have been a part of the applicant's decision to rezone. Let me just pull up. This will work for right now. Actually, hold on. So, the idea to rezone, although the building itself does not have a... They're not planning to put any commercial uses in this building. They do recognize that the rest of the rezoning area does have commercial uses. And rezoning would bring the... Allow for potential redevelopments moving forward. The applicant team does not currently own all of those lots.
Right.
So, it is noted in their EAS, projected sites of development, and future potential options for grouping those buildings together and could... So that that could produce another larger development that would be in line with this rezoning. But, of course, because they don't own it, it's not officially part of it.
I guess my question was getting at whether the applicant really requested this. It's unusual for an applicant to want to rezone and pay for the rezoning of somebody else's property. Or did the department strongly suggest to the applicant? And if it's the latter, I'm interested in the reasons why the department wanted to see this section of Broadway with the railroad above. It's not the most attractive area for residential development, and particularly since some of the lot sizes let's seem very... They don't seem very wide. So, moving back enough from the railroad could be a problem. I'm curious as to who made the suggestion that this should happen.
This project, I am under the impression that this was a decision made by the applicant team. However, I'm sure the applicant team will be happy to clarify further later on. And just to note that because of this irregularly shaped lot, this would create a rectangular... A more regular shape of rezoning. So, perhaps it has something to do with the fact that the front area would then be consistent with the larger area behind. But, again, I believe that's...
Okay, just let the applicant know that I'm interested in that question of how all of these lots came to be part of the rezoning.
Absolutely.
Good. Commissioner Marine?
Thank you. Yafi, thank you for the presentation. I have but maybe two or three questions. One is, you mentioned that the 67 units will be MIH units, understandably, and the building is 100% affordable. So, do you know what the regulatory agreement length would be for the balance of the 75%? Proposed 75% of the units? If you don't have the answer now, that's fine. But if you can find it for me, that would be great. On Slide 15, you show the rear of the building looking from, I'm going to think Albany Crescent across the Major Deacon. And as we know, there's a topo change there, drastic topo change. And there have been various buildings built along the Putnam Greenway in the most recent 15 years. And you mentioned there's a cellar and a subcellar for parking. So, what am I looking... And there is now some parkland above, which is admirable because it provides more green space where there was none. What... Where are the cellar and subcellar? Am I looking at any of the parking areas? Or is everything underground?
So, that's a good question. And there are some... There are additional pictures in the appendix, but I'll just stay on the slide for a second. The concrete-looking cement area, that is the parking space. That is considered cellar and subcellar. So, you are seeing some of that parking, and residential is everything starting where those windows are.
Correct.
And because of that grade change, it looks like it's above the ground, but it's just continued.
Yeah, let's talk about chaining walls, fine. I think it's... There's no issue there for me. And then contrary to Commissioner Benjamin's point, I think it is a smart idea to include those properties along Broadway because we know that we are building on... We're running out of land, and we're building against these elevated rail stations. Everywhere we go, specifically in Brooklyn, you see this happening every day. I don't think there's a problem here as long as the right mitigation measures are put in place to avoid sound and any air quality issues that may exist as a result of the train passing by to the front. We don't know when those things are going to get developed, but it also is smart to keep that commercial overlay because, as you know, Broadway, all the way stretching from, I'm going to say, the target area, 201st Third Street, all the way up to 231st is all commercial overlays. Used to be all mom-and-pop shops, so I do understand that. And then, if possible, if the applicant could provide a section through the building, just so we could understand the topo, that would be great.
Hold on, let me just see if I... If we have... This is a rendering. It looks very in place here. Some stuff about Tibbetts Brook. Here you can kind of see the cellar mentioned and the parking ramp a little bit better. And...
There we go.
There you go. I thought I had something in here that could help. Again, this is, you know, in the earlier stages. Nothing has been finalized. But this is the idea of how that topographic...
So, in this depiction, you have, in the cellar level, you show stackers. There's nothing shown in the subcellar level. Is that also intended to be parking, or is that intended...
That is also intended to be parking.
With stackers or no stackers?
That I am not sure about.
Yeah, if the applicant could clarify the number of spaces, what the arrangement is. Is it attended by someone? Is it robotic? All those questions would be really grateful.
Wanted to see if I had another image in there.
That's fine.
But I'm sure the applicant team will be happy to elaborate on that matter.
Thank you, Yafi.
Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you. This image is really, really useful. I appreciate that. I am wondering if you can help us, when this comes back, understand the 100-year floodplain. I mean, on this side, clearly, the elevation is right. On Broadway, I'm not sure how that would work. And so, I would love to see how is the building anticipating that? It's an interesting vulnerability to flooding, given the fact that this is not a waterfront property, but rather, the water is going to be coming through the street. And so, I'm really interested in understanding how these potential sublevels can actually help mitigate the problem. Can they be activated? And given the fact, I mean, I don't know if it's not... Hasn't been decided, but instead of using stackers, rather, this could be an interesting opportunity to hold water in the case of a flood. So, it would be great to see on Broadway like what's the relationship to the 100-year floodplain. And then, the other quick question is just to reconfirm. I think you said it. I just didn't see it in the materials. There are no industrial businesses there, right?
Correct.
Okay, yes, vacant or commercial, yeah, okay.
And there's one mixed residential, commercial.
Okay, yes, yes.
I did just to point out something for you here. Leave it here.
Yes.
So, although there is no... I don't have the details of how they're going to be mitigating the stormwater from the street. They do have a considerable amount of blue roofs and green roofs that... And water storage, stormwater storage incorporated into the various levels of the building and the terraces. So, for whatever that is worth, that will help with the stormwater mitigation.
For sure. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Other questions? There being none. This is certified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
The third item on our agenda is a review of a non-U-LARP modification of a previously approved special permit in the Manhattan Community District 5. Our presenter is Chelsea Evans.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is a post-referral presentation for a private application by 1211 Sixth Avenue Property Owner LLC, requesting a non-U-LARP modification to a previously granted special permit to enable design and concourse changes in an existing through-block arcade. The existing through-block arcade, highlighted in purple on the map to the right, is located at 1211 Avenue of the Americas in Midtown Manhattan, Community District 5. This image is looking north. The Through-Block Arcade, or TBA, connects West 47th Street and West 48th Street at the mid-block and is one of four passageways that provide mid-block connections for pedestrians between West 46th Street and West 50th Streets. Radio City Music Hall and Rockefeller Center are located just north of the development site. The development site was a subject to several land use approvals in 1970, which included two special permits to allow for height and setback modifications and a floor area bonus for the provision of a through-block arcade. The TBA intends to improve pedestrian circulation in the area and provide desirable secondary commercial frontage. The size and arrangement of the TBA is immortalized in the 1970 drawing plans. In 2007, the CPC approved a modification to the approved plans to reflect the construction of three new Asseverate Studios for 21st Century Fox. And in 2025, a design change certification was approved for the two public plazas also located on the zoning lot. Taken together, the 2025 applications seek to create cohesion between the public spaces on the zoning lot through a holistic design effort. Here's a plan view of the existing zoning lot. It totals 84,852 square feet and is improved with a 45-story office building, two public plazas, which are shown in blue, and a through-block arcade highlighted in purple. The through-block arcade totals 5,469 square feet and is located approximately 340 feet west of Avenue of the Americas. It's about 35 feet wide and has an approximate height of 32 feet. There are two pedestrian bridges above the TBA that connect the eastern and western portions of the building, where the ceiling height drops to about 18 feet. There are also three retail spaces which front onto the TBA and television studio space at the north end. The TBA currently does not contain any amenities. Here are two views of the existing arcade. On the left is a view looking north through the TBA towards West 48th Street. And on the right is a view looking south onto the South Public Plaza and toward West 47th Street. Now we'll walk through the proposed design changes. The applicant proposes to substantially increase the available seating in the arcade, shown in red on the drawing on the right. You'll see 24 movable chairs and six tables totaling 48 linear feet of seating. The applicant also intends to install two-stepped platform seating areas, which are highlighted in blue. Additionally, the applicant proposes to install two new POP signs, which announce public access, and a code of conduct. The locations of those signs are marked with yellow dots on the drawing. The applicant also proposes to install two trash receptacles marked with purple dots. And finally, the applicant will include 38 square feet of planting integrated into the platform seating structure at the north end of the TBA. In addition to the changes just described, the applicant seeks to add new transparent façades to both sides of the TBA, which will allow for better sightlines into the commercial frontage, television studios, and television studios for those passing by. The applicant is also proposing to install decorative lighting overhead, which will brighten the interior of the space. And finally, the applicant will be installing new granite pavers throughout the space that will unify the TBA with the adjacent public plazas. In addition to the design changes, the applicant seeks to clarify that public access to an existing below-grade concourse is not a requirement of the special permit. Today, there are doors in the middle of the TBA on the western wall that provide access to an escalator and stairs to the concourse on the building's cellar level. The entrance to the concourse has been closed for many years now and serves only as internal circulation for the building's tenants. Public access to the subway would continue to be provided at the northeast corner of the zoning lot. This modification will update the approved drawing plans to reflect the existing conditions of the below-grade concourse. In order to facilitate the proposed changes, the applicant is requesting a non-U-LARP modification to the previously granted special permit in the approved drawing plans. The commission must find that there are no new waivers or increase in waivers and that the proposal continues to meet the findings of former ZR Section 7482. The findings are as follows. One, that the proposed changes result in a substantial improvement of pedestrian circulation and that appropriate secondary commercial frontage is provided along the through-block arcade, such as small shops and restaurants. On April 11, 2025, Manhattan Community Board 5 adopted a resolution recommending denial of the application, with 32 in favor, two opposed, and one abstaining. CP5 believes that public access to bathroom facilities should be a requirement of public spaces of a certain size and recommends denial until the applicant agrees to provide public restroom access on the zoning lot. In summary, the applicant, 1211 Sixth Avenue Property Owner LLC, is requesting a non-U-LARP modification to a previously granted special permit to permit design and concourse changes at 1211 Avenue of the Americas. Thank you, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions, commissioners? Commissioner Osorio? Commissioner Mann?
Great, thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you for the presentation. What has been the response to the recommendation or the request from the community board regarding the public bathrooms?
The applicant doesn't intend to provide bathrooms here, but they haven't provided anything formally to us.
It would be great if you can ask for a response.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
You have something to add, or...
Yeah, I just note that the community board, obviously, like most POPs don't make it to the commission or chairperson certifications, but it's a consistent ask with every single POP, irrespective of typology. So, we can have the applicant, you know, provide a response.
Thank you. Commissioner Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'm not sure if the... Yeah, it's on. I just had a question about the below-grade concourse. I'm not sure I totally understood that. So, they are seeking to amend the plans to clarify that a below-grade concourse that's been built, it's there today, but is not open today?
It's not open to the public today, and it's not a requirement of the previously granted special permit. At one time, it did provide you could enter the below-grade concourse through the TBA. There's an escalator and stairs that are on the western wall of the through-block arcade. And you could enter the below-grade concourse. It's a sort of winding, dimly-lit corridor, and I think it's about 300 feet, travels east-west. It's about 300 feet long, and it will take you to the subway entrance that's on the northeast corner of the zoning lot. But it's been closed for several years now, so it's used for the internal circulation of the building.
At one point, the building made it accessible to the public through the TBA, and at that...
At one point, yes. It wasn't a requirement, but it was at one point open. And it's been closed for many years now.
Right. And so, what's... We're just, again, it's always a shame to lose any pedestrian circulation anywhere in Midtown. I'm just curious, what is the clarification that is not public required if it's clear that it wasn't required to be public?
Can you rephrase the question?
Yeah, sir, help me understand what the clarification actually means here. Were we practically clarifying?
It's formalizing the existing condition that when this was approved in 1970,[1775.71] Uh, it's formalizing the existing condition that when, this was approved in nineteen-seventy, there was, you know, permitted to be accessed down through the, um, escalators, switchback, you can see, you know, on the far side of the screen, and you could go out into, um, the, uh, the Rockefeller Center station. But, mm, a long time ago, security was established at these entry points to the headquarters for News Corp.
Sure.
Um, they're the anchor ten of the building. And so, it's effectively been just circulation space only to be used by people in the building. And they're using this opportunity because it's not, that there's site plan control of it, but it's, this is an opportunity to kind of ra, like, formalize what's been in practice.
And I, I guess what I'm just trying to understand is that, did the original special permit plans indicate that this was public?
No, they did not. They indicated it was, like, circulation space, but not public circulation space. So, we clarified that internally with, you know, with our team, did some digging on it. Um, and, uh, yeah, that, it's within scope to...
Right. Okay, yeah, just it seems to be a, a, just a shame to lose any below-grade subway access anywhere in Midtown. Um, and so, I just was, was poking at that to see if there's anything that we could do to actually open up the below-grade corridors for use during inclement weather, you know, given these are very busy sidewalks on Forty-seventh, Forty-eighth, Forty-ninth, and Sixth Avenue.
Of course. Um, and also, the, with like, the escalators that go up to Through Block Arcade, security has been very tightened, I think, due just to conditions surrounding the anchor tenant. And so, it's, um, not particularly used, uh, even for folks in the building, but the main entrance on the north, um, east corner is gonna continue to be maintained.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Uh, okay, commissioners, as was previously stated, this is a non-U-LARP modification to a previously approved special permit. So, what's being asked of us today is, uh, an assent-by-voice vote to send an approval letter to the Buildings Department. Uh, so, I will canvass the commission. All those in favor, uh, please say yea.
Yea.
Yes. Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, now we will hear, uh, there are two post-hearing follow-ups, uh, to be presented.
For post-hearing follow-ups, first, we have nineteen-nineteen Highland Boulevard, which has a public hearing, which had a public hearing at the April ninth public meeting. Justin is on Zoom to present.
Okay.
All right, um, good afternoon, commission. Uh, so, the Department of City Planning staff supports the following application for the acquisition of approximately five thousand nine hundred forty square feet of portion of privately-owned block three-five-five-one, Lot one forty at nineteen-nineteen Highland Boulevard in Staten Island Community District Two. This is a joint public application submitted by the New York City Department of Design and Construction, the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services, and New York City Department of Environmental Protections. The requested acquisition action would facilitate continued maintenance and advancement of the Use Best Management Practices program in the New Creek Blue Belt system in Community District Two of Staten Island. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Rivera on this? So, this will be coming for a vote?
Yes.
Roughly soon. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, take care. Thank you.
All right, I see, uh, his eminent Stephen Johnson is here. So, let me speculate to say what he might be here to talk about.
Tony.
Well, let me give you something. Uh, Coney Development, you have, uh?
Bally's?
Um.
Rail Yards?
I'm officially here for Coney, just to answer any questions, or to follow up with anything that you have, or to go back to the applicant floor.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Thank you.
Be it Coney or, or anything else you might want to ask Mr. Johnson.
My sir, recommendations. Yes.
No questions on Coney? When is this coming for a vote, Steve?
Two weeks, uh, from today.
Okay. So, we'll have another shot of, uh, arguably the...
Can I ask a question? This, this, maybe this isn't fair, and I know you do this in the presentation, but can you remind us of the, and I know there's a slide, and there's many more projects than we are experiencing, but the ones that needed to come to us, and the, where, where we are with them, just as a reminder?
Sure. So, the four that came to the City Planning Commission, Western Rail Yards, Coney Development, Bally's, and Queens Future, those had actions outside of the zoning text amendment that was approved, uh, in, uh, January of two years ago. Um, so, um, those came through, and those have all been certified. Uh, Queens Future was approved by council.
Mm-hmm.
Um, obviously, Western Rail Yards has moved on also, and now we have Coney and Bally's that are the left, uh, to get through the CPC vote. So, the other applications, uh, well, everybody is gonna be submitting applications to the state by July twenty-seventh of this year, and those will be all the applications, including the ones that you have not seen.
Nine in total, right?
There are now eight from the city, because Saks, Saks folded on their application.
And the reason we haven't seen them is because they didn't have actions outside of the zoning.
That's correct.
Modifications we made two years ago.
Yeah, everything was covered by that. So, uh, when those applications are submitted to the state by, uh, the summer, uh, the city, city planning is leading the review, the internal review of those applications, submitting, uh, responses, uh, from other city agencies, if they have comments on, you know, D.O.T., et cetera, P.D.C., Parks Department. So, they will, uh, city agencies will have an opportunity to review the application, the full application, because we haven't seen the full application from anybody. Um, E.D.C. is doing the financial review of those applications, uh, and that's what we've been tasked with by City Hall. And the C.A.C. memberships have not been, the mayor has not announced anybody for the, uh, C.A.C. membership. You know, each C.A.C. is based on the location of the proposed, uh, casino. So, um, you know, somebody, the, the Bronx Borough President's gonna be on the C.A.C. for Bronx, et cetera, for, uh, no local council member, no local politicians, so.
Thank you, Stephen. That's very helpful, just packaging the...
Yeah, dude. Stephen, a couple of questions. One, you mentioned that Queens Futures was approved by council. Has W, that's the Western Rail Yards been heard by council yet?
No, it has not.
Okay. And then, um, you mentioned the C.R.C., the C.A.C., so it is possible that in Manhattan, or, or how will the C.A.C.'s work in, in Manhattan, in the city, that, since there's so many applications, sort of, in the same area?
So, it's a state-defined process, so, um, the city doesn't really have, uh, control of how those will be run, but the C.A.C.'s will have the six members to approve. It has to be a two-thirds majority to approve it, or it stops right there, if they don't get approval. Uh, it has the, the mayor, the borough president, city council member, you know, the state assembly member, and the state, uh, uh...
Senator.
Senator.
Well, that, that's, 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 that's the concern. The concern is, you have the BP in Manhattan, you have the BP, you have the local council person. I mean, it seems, it seems to be the same group, right? And if two-thirds, i, i, it, it's, it's gonna be tricky, is what I'm trying to get at.
It could be tricky. There's, there's, um, public hearings, they're required to have at, at least two public hearings to get testimony from the presidents. But, you know, for example, the, the different council areas, you know, are different from the U.N. site, the one that's south of the U.N. site, and the one by the rail yards.
So, that helps, yeah.
So, there are some, there is some discrepancy. And, uh, like I said, the mayor hasn't assigned anybody, uh, to be representative yet, so he could possibly choose different people for the different areas.
Understood. And that would, that would, that, that's sort of beneficial. Thank you, Stephen.
Any other questions? Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thanks for the, for being here to address questions. Um, I would love to maybe schedule some time to, to go over, um, some of the details that we discussed at, back at the hearing, some of the questions that may still sort of like be pending. But, but just for now, I just wanted to know if, has there been, I remember that when we had the hearing, the comments from the Borough President had, from the Brooklyn Borough President had just come in, so there wasn't a formal response. Since then, has the applicant formally responded to them?
For the Coney Development? Um, the applicant, um, they haven't, I don't think, I don't have a public statement that they've made related to, uh, the BP's, the response, the Brooklyn BP's response. Um, they have been in contact with him, and previously, during the whole process, you know, they presented to their team. And so, they, they've had, uh, official responses to that team that I haven't been a part of, so.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, just, um, eh, eh, so, so we know, has there been any meaningful changes regarding route level, ground level amenities, and all of that? When we heard from them, they said that they were looking into it, but...
For which specific project?
The Coney.
The Coney project. So, um, there has not been any specific ground level changes? Are you referring to, like, amenities and seating or plantings? There, so that's kind of still in the design process?
Okay.
So, those would be determined more in, during the C.A.C. review?
Okay.
Um, they have stated that, you know, Stillwell would be a pedestrianized area. Uh, obviously, there's flags as to the shade in that area, and what could be grown, uh, for landscaping, but, uh, that's something that they will have to address with their applications.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Other questions? Johnson. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Madam Secretary, anything else on the agenda today?
No, Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, can I just, just take a moment to acknowledge our friend and colleague, Sookie, who is, as I understand, this may be her last meeting with us?
It is, thank you.
And just say...
I was hoping that was a dark rumor.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you for everything.
Oh.
And for keeping us all in line, and educated, and on top of things, and changing our passwords every fifteen minutes.
[laughing]
But really, it's just been a pleasure, and we wish you well, and we hope we'll continue to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. What are you doing?
I'll be doing something fun at night.
Oh, great.
Who's thought those words would go together?
Well... Making fun.
I know it.
Making fun, and you, you will bring your special touch to the place, and you're a lot, so, congrats. And you're getting your degree too, your master's degree, so that's a big deal. It will all come together.
Personally, I don't, I don't know how I'm gonna function.
I kinda, I kinda agree. I think that's right.
So, it's my go-to, I don't know if it's freaking out, right?
So, do you have, you have any other bad news to bestow, uh, so, Sookie, before we, uh, adjourn the meeting?
No, I don't have any bad news.
Okay. That's it. Who needs to adjourn?
Do you wanna say?
No, but I, I love how awful we are sometimes.